Ready? Thank you for being here. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance and the Lord's Prayer. Lord's Prayer.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespassed against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The Father is the Kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mosher?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Jakes?
Here.
Lamar still having foot problems, and he asked that everybody remember in his prayers and thoughts. He's having, he's getting better, but gonna have to have another operation on the foot, so it's, he's really down, so let's pray for Lamar. We have a minutes in the pack, and hope you had a chance to look over those. Do I hear a motion to accept?
Move second.
Motion made second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose likewise, motion does carry. The recorder has a report now for October bill payments. Jessica?
No, ma'am. I've left my report on October bill payments in my office, so I'll be right back. I'm very sorry.
I do have to go somewhere, but I can't get my hands on it. Can we table this for the January meeting, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Do we need any form of motion?
Does it need to be a motion, John, to table?
No.
Okay.
As long as there's a consensus.
We have no visitors registered or any public comment. We do have a public hearing to take comments on several ordinances. Is there anyone here present to make comment on ordinance number 1028 to add the public comment period to meetings?
I have a question. Can we do it now? I know it's unusual to ask somebody at a public hearing, but we can say history.
Well, though, it's coming up later.
I know. I mean, this is just a clarification of what it means.
Yeah.
John, in 1-204, it says order debate and public comment.
Yeah.
And it says that any proposed ordinance or resolution property on the agenda of the Board of Commissioners may be considered and debated by the Commissioner with or without a motion on the floor regarding such ordinance or resolution. So that'll do away with there being a requirement to be a motion to do anything.
Now, there'll have, there'll have to be a motion. What that's saying is, is that y'all can participate in the public comment. That's what this ordinance is about, and if somebody in the audience is making public com, making a public comment, and any of you feel like you need, for the purpose of clarification or just to answer a question that you might have, that you all can participate.
Just like that?
Just like you all right this minute.
Okay. So, and then when we answer that to the meeting, whether to adopt or not, we still fall back under Robert's rules.
Right. You still have to have a motion second.
We clear on that?
Yes, thank you.
Is there anyone present to make comment on ordinance number 1030 to amend Title 11 for use of city property? Is there anyone present to make comment on ordinance number 1031 to rezone a partial on Highway 11 North? Is there anyone present to make comment on ordinance number 1032 to adapt River Park Lane as a city street? If not, no comments, public hearing is closed. In all business, is there a motion for ordinance number 1028? This ordinance, Mayor and Board of Commissioners, 1-202 Order of Business and to add 1-204 Order of Debate and Public Comment on Second and Final Reading.
I move we adopt.
Second.
Motion's made second, any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Mosher?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jakes?
Aye.
Commissioner Stutz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion for ordinance number 1030 to amend Title 11 Municipal Offensive, Chapter 7, Miscellaneous, 11-706, for the use of city property on second and final reading? Move to adopt ordinance as read.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Mosher?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jakes?
Aye.
Commissioner Stutz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion for ordinance number 1031 to rezone Mount 015 in Group A Partial 005.00 on Highway 11 from R1 to R2 on second and final reading?
I make the motion for adoption ordinance number 1031 based on the recommendation of the Land Commission as submitted. Second.
Motion made second, any discussion on this? Roll call, vote.
Commissioner Mosher?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jakes?
Aye.
Commissioner Stutz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion for ordinance number 1032 to adapt River Park Lane as a city street on second and final reading?
Make a motion for approval of ordinance 1032.
I'll second that.
Motion's made second, any discussion? If not, roll call, vote.
Commissioner Mosher?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jakes?
Aye.
Commissioner Stutz?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will continue to table library appointment. Under new business, we are applying for CDVG grant for the community center. We will now open a public hearing to take comments on this project. Any comments?
Mitch Lomis with East Tennessee Development District is here. If anybody has any questions about that CDVG grant application that we're putting in. Thank you for being with me.
How does that look, Mitch? Have you, are you in the process for filing it and everything?
Well, it'll, it'll actually, the application will actually go in April 5th. So our steps is to have this public hearing first. The next will be for us to select the engineer, which I know Sam, you're doing most of the architect work for that, but we still have to go through that selection process. And then the third step will be for you guys as a commission to pass the, the resolution that basically says, hey, we will provide our match, which we can go up to a million dollars, so I'm assuming we're probably gonna go up to a billion dollars for that.
Can we go ahead and start doing anything without the grant being approved? Then the grant could be?
No. Anything you do right now is on your own. Now, you can go ahead and start working, I hope, but they're not gonna reimburse you any.
Like take bids or anything like?
Nothing. Not unless you say this part of it.
So we waste a half a year and not know where we're gonna get the grant or not.
Yeah, that basically. Now, if you want, if there's some part of it that you have monies for and say, well, this part, let's go ahead and do this part of it, you definitely can.
We can do that.
But the state's not gonna reimburse you for anything that we're asking for.
Okay. So if we, if we wanted to spend some money to go, go ahead and start the work on it, 'cause April's almost half a year, you know, that we're gonna be losing, if we wanted to do work on it, we wouldn't get refunded, but the grant would still?
Yeah, what we would have to do is decide what part of you guys wanna go ahead and start doing, and then what part are we gonna make as part of the application?
Does that include in kind work too?
The CBG can include. It's, it's a little harder to do, but it can include in kind. We just have to kinda go through some steps there for that.
You said it won't be put towards the reimbursement, but will it be put towards the match? If we have to match so much and we decide to start working now, will?
No.
Nothing is retroactive at all?
Yeah, until you get that contract signed, anything you do, the state's not gonna give you a billion dollars.
I think that the city had already funded some of the architectural work, and we've not spent all of that funding yet, so we can go ahead with all of that. We were planning on paying for those of engineering and designing and architectural work upfront anyway. So as soon as we wanna start on that, we can. It'll take that long before we find out about the grant anyway. We're still quite a ways away from having full drawings on that.
How long?
We wouldn't be ready to start construction by April.
You said it's gonna be granted in April maybe?
Well, no, we'll make the application in April, and then you're actually not gonna know nothing till, well, we're still way in the last years right now, so you're probably looking at about, it used to be October, but it's November now. It's really up to the governor once he decides to make those announcements. So you're looking at probably October, November of 2024 before you're even gonna know anything.
On a scale of one to 10, what, what do you feel like? We've, we've not done too good on this so far, and you think it's a, it's a good grant application?
Oh, yeah, definitely, because that's one of the things right now, CBG, the biggest thing with CBG, which for somebody doesn't know, that's, that's HUD money. It's called Community Development Block Grant. They was always big on water and sewer. Of course, when everybody started getting that, that federal ARP monies and all that, they said, you know what? We, we don't need to be giving no more grants on water and sewer right now. So they really started saying, let's look at recreation parks and this and that. So yes, I think this will stand an excellent chance, 'cause you're gonna show that you already started on a major project, and they would love to be part of this. So yeah, I think you stand an excellent chance.
We're also pairing the Broadband Community Connectivity Grant for this same project, which is a $2 million grant, maximum award. So that would be $3 million total in grant funding. There's multiple phases we can do inside that $3 million. So we would start with the architectural work, be working on that while we wait to hear on CBG. It's gonna take a while to get all that done anyway.
But is it being together, or?
The timeframe line broadband connected community, this is the first time I've ever done this grant, so we're not exactly sure what the timeframe's gonna be, but they say they're gonna award in January.
Yeah.
So we're supposed to know in January if we get?
Now, that basically, yeah, that one, we basically like for the community to say, we have to identify an, an area, which will be the large meeting rooms, I guess, in the community center. That is what we have to identify, hey, this is what we wanna use that connect broadband grant money. 'Cause our whole thing is, we wanna be able to have a room where people can come in, you know, if you have a, doesn't have to be elderly, but a lot of times it is elderly, comes in for telehealth or something, say, hey, I, I need a place to go, I don't have broadband in my house, I can't afford it, or whatever reason. Well, they can go there and potentially, you know, help department to come over and help them on how to get telehealth. And it can be other things. We may have a, a new job come open inside the city, private jobs or something. People say, well, I have to go in there and I have to be able to fill out everything online now, and I've never done this before. Well, they can come in there and, you know, that's what they want this broadband connect to do, be able to actually open up broadband for the citizens of Sweetwater. So that, that's what we're looking at on this grant, is to actually have a place. We'll also be looking at, what is it gonna take to make it broadband ready? So, you know, we do know we'll have to run some probably fiber, I would assume, over there to make it broadband ready. So that's what this grant will do on the community. And then the other one would be simply, you know, we're, we're looking at recreation, what do we need to do, and that could potentially be the, the basketball, you know, and then whatever else.
Okay. Thank you, Mitch. Anybody have any more comments that'd like to make about the community center? I'd like to have some comments so that we can have them for record. Somebody get up and testify. Hey, man, let's do it.
It helps our grant application if we have citizens say that they're in support of the community.
I think that the CBGD grant will be a great asset for the city of Sweetwater.
Thank you.
Think that, what else do you need? I think it'll be good. Actually, I think it'll be good. It'll give us an opportunity to have some things that we don't have available right now.
Thanks, sir. Yeah.
Yeah, I second what Brandon says. It'd be nice to have a place to have old men basketball. I'll play in that later.
Like, the beauty about this, this community center here, it is still downtown, 'cause a lot of times people don't have a room downtown, but they build one, it may be five miles on the other side of town, and, well, then you kinda lose, but this one's right here, so it's still, will help the downtown. We're very thrilled about that.
Tanya? Sit up and testify. You're not gonna say anything?
Tanya provided a letter of support for the grant as the library, so we appreciate that, Tanya.
I'll support it. I'll, I'll say that the CBG home grant that we completed last year was a big success. You know, eight homes that have that, and this could help even more families because it's a community center, so I'm all for it.
Like John, Eddie. Well, I, I know the fire chief and I talked, talked about, we've got our Citizens Police Academy going on now, and we talked about how the community could, could benefit from having a community center where we can bring everybody in to do joint training like the police and fire departments doing, and that way get the community involved that way. Thank you, Eddie. Olivia?
It's gonna provide opportunities for the city of Sweetwater that we don't have right now.
David?
I'm with all the rest of them. I'm all for it.
All right. Son, do you got anything you want to say?
We always need meeting rooms and the broadband, all this, everything, I'm like David, everything that everybody said, it's, it's something that's been needed for a long time, and I think this is a good opportunity to get some money to fit up with it.
John Anderson?
He said, he took care of mine. We got both of us.
Okay. What about Shane, Sean?
Thank you, everybody's had some excellent comments. Go for it.
We gotta have your name, though. We want your name. Okay, everybody for it, just raise your hand. Hundred percent. So there you go, Jessica.
Thanks, ma'am. We'll do it.
Thank you.
There is a sign-in sheet here.
Yeah.
And, and I've got an extra one if you, if you guys wanna, wanna pass around. There is one here, so if everybody?
Just pass it around. Somebody will walk out and forget I did here.
And there's another one there, so I'll, I'll give you guys that one, you can sign this one up.
Thank you.
And then Jessica, you can just get it.
All right, at this time, our library board is asking us to have a conversation on a? Oh, okay. Back to ordinances, number 1033 to close part of Industrial Park Road on First Street. That is the one out next to Master Milk, goes down to Master Milk, comes in a dead end, right, John?
That's correct. Yeah, it goes down there and just turns into a cul-de-sac and back out.
We talked about that in the workshop, like, anything? Do I hear a motion to close it?
Motion to close the section of the road. That's recommended by John.
Second. Motion made second, any discussion on that? Everybody clear on this? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Mosher?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jakes?
Aye.
Commissioner Stutz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Library Board has asked for some time for a conversation on enabling library employees to receive benefits. We've had this letter here from the Library Board. Jim Fairweather, Vice Chairman, has written it down here. Jim, do you have anything to?
No, I was just gonna kinda go over the letter.
Would you come up and?
Yeah.
At the podium, please, and just?
As you guys have on your... So first, thank you for having us this evening, and thank you to my fellow trustees for coming out. We are all appointed by this board to serve as trustees. We're all volunteers. Most of us get roped into serving on the library board and are told that it's only four meetings a year, nothing much to it. But some things that I wanted to bring to the commission's attention. One, all the employees of the library are employees of the city of Sweetwater, they're currently part-time status. It is our recommendation that the commission consider changing these employees from part-time to full-time status, be eligible for city benefits. In the very near future, sometime in the next five years, the library will probably reach, I believe, what's called Level Four status. We're currently a Level Three library. This is due to the increase in kids and people using the library. And in the future, to recruit librarians and things of that nature, we will certainly need to have benefits. Also, things to consider, having the librarian be considered a department head within the city of Sweetwater. The library handbook and the city's employee handbook, kinda merging those two. There was a lot of confusion over the employees of the library. Are they employees of the library or city? They are city employees, and that needs to be put into various handbooks. And finally, having a commissioner attend our quarterly meetings. I've been on the board about a year and a half, so it would be nice to have a city commissioner attend our meetings. So, that's my report. Anything else, guys, that you wanna add?
Okay.
Thank you.
I tell you, for the sake of time and everything, we all have got this letter here. Let's, let's bring this up at the next workshop. Okay with everybody, so we can discuss?
I would make a suggestion that we maybe just have a committee look at this. There's a lot of intricacies to this. It's a lot more complicated. For example, is the library board gonna retain the authority to hire the employee, or is that authority gonna come in with the city board? Because right now, the library board is who may hire and fire employees, not the city board, which is one reason that they're different from regular city employees. Also, who's gonna fund the transition from part-time to full-time? Because the city is the primary funder of the library, so are you asking for the hourly wages to be, you know, added, more hours for every employee added to, to turn them into full-time employees, because they have to hit a certain threshold to qualify for health insurance and retirement? So are we gonna be funding that? Are we also gonna be funding the benefits on top of that? I'm assuming the county's probably not gonna come in and, and add any extra money on that. They haven't increased it in years, and the city has increased our contribution every year. So there's so many details on that, I don't think this full board is gonna be able to sit here in a board meeting and talk that through. So I wonder if we might appoint a committee with maybe a couple people from the library board and a couple people from the city board, and we can work out the details and then make a recommendation, maybe, back to the full board?
Joanne, will you and Jim serve on it?
Sure.
I'll serve.
We need two or three?
I think two is great.
Okay. And Jim, y'all get a?
Yeah, Stuart and I. Do we need two or three on that committee?
I would say?
I'll probably serve on it too, just so I can tell you what the transition is for the human resources side of it. So that and then five people.
Can we have two plus the, plus Tanya? I would like Tanya to be on it.
Okay. So y'all work out a time and bring it back to the board.
We'll try and go back to you all for the January workshop then.
Okay.
So we'll, Stuart and Jim and Tanya will get together.
Is that good enough, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We have hirings in several departments to fill vacancies. Is there a motion for any of these appointments?
Commissioning use is out with circumstances beyond his control, but at his request, I would like to move that we hire Will Dyer to fill a vacancy in the Parks Department.
Will Dyer?
Yes.
You make that form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose likewise, Will Dyer has been hired. Any more?
I'd like to make the motion of hiring Colin Hansen to the litter crew on the street department.
What, what was the name of it?
Colin.
Okay. Form of a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose likewise, motion does carry.
Police Department, we would like to authorize the hiring of Caden Dupree. He's presently an auxiliary officer, so he knows what he's getting into. We'd also like to request the approval for the hiring of Dante Johnkins as a full-time officer. This will complete the hiring for our grant positions.
You want to put those together for?
Yes.
Or is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose likewise, motion does carry. Any more?
I think that's it. And those were all vacancies. None of those are new positions created. They're all already funded in vacant positions.
Okay. Also, under this, we would like to declare, in the workshop discussion, the police commissioner asked to have retiring officers be given their service weapons. We would need to declare those guns as surplus assets and approve the police chief to give that asset to the retired E. I guess John would count them. Would John fall under this?
Yes, he retired last week.
Okay. That's good. And we need a motion and second before this can go into effect. Do I hear a motion?
So move second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose likewise, motion does carry. The street department was asking to trade equipment and would need approval to dispose of the asset in the street department. Mr. Jakes?
Yes.
Do you have a word on this for, before the vote?
So again, we would like to swap machines between, the street department has a Bobcat 743, it's good steer, but they are not using. It needs to have a battery and new tires put on it. And Jinx Concrete has a roller compactor that is in good working condition that the street department would like. We would like to do a swap of the two pieces of machinery since the people that have them now don't need them, and the other people would like them. And I'm removing myself from this vote since I'm one of the owners of Jinx Concrete.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? Okay, do I hear a motion?
The fact that I asked before, beforehand, is are they comparable on value? What, what is, what kind of roller is it?
It's a whacker. Um, and the skid steer, probably in the real world would be more valuable than the roller, but the skid steer is also discontinued, it's no longer made, it stopped being, um, made in ninety, mostly because it's a very small skid steer, so there's not a lot of resale value to it because it can't really do what needs to be done, which is why it's been sitting there. The reason it has value to me is because my guys will not steal it from me because it can't do what it needs to do on, so I can remove pallets and I can get things off of our semi trucks with this little skid steer and it will actually stay up because it does. So we feel, we have looked at both pieces of equipment, um, my boss Jacob has looked at what the streets has, streets have looked at what we have, and we feel that it is a comparable swap.
One, one question I would have is for, for David. David, with, with the swap of the skid steer, do we have a skid steer we, within, within our equipment now that we wouldn't basically need multiple?
Yes, we have a brand new skid steer now, I think, you know, does everything we need. The only thing we've, that, that skid steer has ever been used for, since I worked for the city, was for the jackhammer and the guy that got together, I don't know, a little over three years ago and fixed the other skid steer, the one we had before our new one, to run the jackhammer and it hasn't been moved since.
So it, it sounds like to me that basically it's, it's an older piece of equipment?
Yeah.
That we already have multiple pieces of equipment that do this work, we're just trading it for a new piece of equipment that does other work. Is that correct?
Yeah, it, the, the roller would go, go along with our hot box good because we're doing more asphalt passing now. And the roller we have now is a very small one and it just, I mean, it doesn't do a good job. This is articulating vibratory roller, so it's going to do a lot better on the patch work.
Okay. At that point with the old one that we have, old roller we have now would no longer be needed, so you can look at?
We probably won't use it anymore. I mean, you know, we might use it on some small stuff, but we're going to be using the, you know, if we make the trade, we're going to be using the other one the majority of the time.
That skid steer's got the tires on the tracks, don't it?
Tires, yes.
I moved authorized this one.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those likewise, motion does carry. We discussed the option on the TNG property in the workshop, we talked about pursuing a tax sale for the property. Now that the appeals time has passed, is there a motion to direct John Cleveland to pursue this path of a tax sale?
So moved. And moved, and moved, and moved. Second and third.
It'll take several months to organize this, we understand, and we can discuss it, uh, at a later date on sales tax. Second, do I hear one?
I think we got four. You need six more.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those likewise, motion does carry. Harris has forward a name of a appointee to the Historic Zoning Commission, which has a vacancy, Ashley Myers Burge, is that right, Burge?
That's her married name, for us.
Yeah, Ash- Ashley that used to work here, uh, she's a, she's a fine young lady. Is there a motion to accept?
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those likewise, motion does carry. The workshop for December is usually canceled unless pressing business comes up. Is that okay with everyone to, um, cancel our workshop this December? Unless something comes up. Something comes up, we'll have a call meeting or a witness.
It falls on Christmas Day.
Fall on Christmas Day. We'll be here Christmas Day, we'll discuss something.
You all can be here Christmas Day.
Also, the January meeting will fall on Monday, so if it's okay with the, uh, council,
we will meet Tuesday, January second. You got a problem with anyone? Okay. In the meantime, I want to thank everybody for a wonderful Christmas parade that we had the other night. It was, I think, probably the largest one. That's what everybody says, eyes in front, others lie. But Jim, thanks to Quanis Club for another great Christmas parade behalf of the mayor commissioners of Sweetwater. It was really, and y'all got something going on down at, uh, Willow Creek, don't you? Or have you done had it?
We done had it.
Done had it, okay. But you got a lot of lights and things down there for people to see.